Ready? All right, call the meeting in order. We'll call please.
Phil Meyer?
Here.
Heasling?
Here.
Clint Hammer?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
We will start with citizens input. Anyone want to address the council? Nope. All right. Then we'll move on to consent agenda. Have a motion or anything else for separate discussion.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. I will please.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Phil Meyer?
Aye.
Heasling?
Aye.
That's approved five zero. First item was resolution one seventy-two of twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving the change order final for the Meadows Cart Path Improvement Project.
Yeah, I guess I'm staying up over here, but um this is just, we're gonna be closing out the car path project tonight. This change order is just a final balance of the project. When everything was all said and done, the total resulted in a net decrease of the contract price of three thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Unless council has questions, we would recommend approval of change order number five.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one seventy-two of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? I will please.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Phil Meyer?
Aye.
Heasling?
Aye.
That's approved five zero. Resolution one seventy-three of twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving payout final for the Meadows Art Path Improvement Project.
Yep, so then this will just be the final payout, including retainage for the project. The total amount for the payout number final is sixty-one thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Unless council has any questions, we recommend approval of payout number five.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one seventy-three of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
You got a motion second, discussion? I will.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Phil Meyer?
Aye.
Heasling?
Aye.
That's approved five zero. Resolution one seventy-four, twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving certificate of substantial completion, statement of final completion, release of claims, and onerous acceptance of work for the Meadows Cart Path Improvement Project.
Yep, so these documents will formally close out the project. Like normally, the kind of significant thing to just pay attention to here is on the certificate of substantial completion. The date identified for substantial completion was October thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. There is a two-year correction period along with this project, which would mean from that date, the two years kicked off, so the final day of the correction period would be October thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So unless council has any questions, we recommend approval of these documents in closing out the project.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one seventy-four of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Yeah, just one question. It's been four weeks since I've been out to the Meadows, but I'm gonna guess everything's looking great, right?
Yeah.
And any retainer that we have on there is still held, or there isn't?
The retainage is all out for the project. It's paid out as part of this this closeout, but there's that two-year correction period.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Okay, nothing else? Call roll please.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Phil Meyer?
Aye.
Heasling?
Aye.
Yeah, it is approved. We'll move on to resolution one seventy-five, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving the purchase snowball trucking equipment for Public Works.
Yeah, so twenty twenty-six truck, this will be the second of the two we've been looking for. Replace our twenty seventeen. The caveat again with the deposit program, if we wanna pay that upfront, we save the three and a half percent and then lock in the price guarantee. I did get, it says in the memo, June on the equipment package, but I just talked to the salesman today, so that's out until August or September probably of twenty-five already. So I would recommend paying the deposit at this time, saving that forty-five hundred, locking in that pricing with the volatility of the market. For equipment, you know, it slowed a little bit, but we'll likely see some price increases by then.
Just a couple of questions I have. Is it in June, are we, can we get a twenty-six truck in June?
Yeah, they'll be building twenty-sixes yet.
Okay, I just, I just didn't think they'd built those until the fall, but that's, that's, that was surprising to me. And then is the deposit on both the truck and Henderson or just Henderson?
Just Henderson.
Just Henderson, okay, so the deposit of-
Truck is pay when we get.
Okay, so the hundred and twenty-seven thousand is all we have to pay upfront?
Correct. Actually, it's a hundred and twenty-two and just shy of one twenty-three. This one twenty-seven was without deposit.
Okay, okay.
One twenty-two, five, six, eight.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It went out just from July.
Slightly. I know it was pretty, pretty flat. We were five hundred bucks more, I think, total package, but we cut a couple of things off of this other truck to kind of try to save some money that we may or may not need.
Do we have two trucks? How many trucks do we have? Snowplow trucks do we have?
We have four.
Oh, okay.
We will have two-
New ones and new ones. Okay. Great.
And they're gonna sell the other two.
Yeah, we'll put them on Wisconsin Surplus. It's an online auction. We did really well on that with our last truck. We made more than we expected, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one seventy-five of twenty twenty-four with the early pay deposit.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve with the, with the discount, with the deposit.
Mm-hmm.
Other discussion? I will.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Phil Meyer?
Aye.
Heasling?
Aye.
That is approved five zero. Next up, resolution one seventy-six. Twenty twenty-four. The resolution approving plat of survey of Hales Mill Road, plat one and plat two.
Um, this, these plats, plat one and plat two are the replats. Plat one is for the replat of the house that is on, currently on Asbury Road. And this would be the area where this goes across the street to Hales Mill Road, so it's on the house that's on the northeast corner. So on the front of the property, um, there's about below three thousand square feet that's being, being used for right, future right-of-way, or when we do the roundabout construction. And then to the rear of the property, this angle here will be going for, you know, the future street, which will angle come in through here and then make the connection to Radford Road. And then on plat two, this is currently where the Cruzy property is. Um, so again, you're gonna see the Radford Road come in through here and then come out and do the angles. Both of these plats are so that we are able to go in and sell the house that's a Cruzy property and also the house that's on Asbury Road. I mean, the city owns both of them, but that was the one we, this is the one we purchased um, from Cruzy's. On this one, it's interesting in that, you know, there's area that was taken off of the property here, you know, for the right-of-way, but this property also gained property um, up here for the right-of-way, so this property actually has, has stayed about the same size. Um, if we wanna go back and look at the project as a whole, that's this angle here where this is the house where plat one, where we're taking off a little bit of the front and it's moving to the rear. And this is where the house currently is from a aerial point of view. And then down here, which is twenty-four thirty-three Radford Road. It's looping into the front of the property, but they're gaining some also in the back. There is a pinch point that's right here, and then there's a pinch point like right here where we needed about three feet from what we would have for our typical setback. Um, this plat has gone through board of adjustment and they've approved a special exception for that pinch point. Um, planning and zoning has also approved the plats, um, and we're here to recommend for council approval.
Beth, well, we have three properties to sell. Um, what I'm thinking of is the, on the top by the roundabout, where we're taking the one house out, okay, that's, I see that one, but then there's a lot right behind that. Is that big enough for a, for a pro, for a home?
Here?
No, right, go to right, now goes down, that one. That, is that big enough to build a home on that property?
Um, we probably have not really made a plan for that property because right now, when we purchased the property, this property and this property came together in one sale. Um, potentially, this, you know, this, this piece of property could be resold. The plan for, you know, the house that's up here, um, right now we're renting it. However, at some point that will also be demolished.
And then the one across the, the, the new road there, that one, as I recall, that one will be sold, but that, the lease is until April? Is that when that lease is up?
The lease ends the end of March.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna maybe talk about the dispositional houses, just make sure council's on board yet.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, that does, our plan, at least the staff recommendations, we don't wanna be renting those two houses that are directly impacted by these two replats. But the red brick one, we're, we're called the student house. I mean, it's in good shape and we intend to, I think it's wise to keep that for indefinitely.
Well, well, the only thing that's going in, the first part of the thing that we're gonna approve though is just the three-legged, the only thing that's approved is the three-legged roundabout, right? We haven't gotten to the other parts yet, right?
Right, so we don't need to, to, right, if the-
We can keep writing them until-
That's what I said. It makes sense to keep-
Till we need it.
Keep burning that one. The other two, from a staff perspective, we, we, we're recommending liquidating.
Yep.
Cruzy as soon as policy, the other one.
That makes sense.
There's issues we need, we need to make some decisions in March, but
Yep.
that's not relevant to this discussion with replanning.
Yep.
But the understanding is with this replat, we are diminishing the value, but fifty cent on, fifty cents on a dollar is better than zero, because the other option is we demolished them and they are I guess it could be buildable lots of different configuration.
The other thing, you had a nice, you had submitted a plan one time with, uh, commercial properties and parking lots on both sides too, both houses had to come down, so.
Yeah, and somebody could, I mean, if, probably how the house behind it were sold together, you're down to two houses and that entire area could be, be commercial. Just the question to you is, you know, approving the replat based on the, the variance that the zoning board approved.
You need a resolution, or I'll make a motion to approve resolution one seventy-six, twenty twenty-four, approving the plat survey of Hales Mill Road, plat one and plat two.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Kurt, you had a concern and I, I thought about that more, and I understand what you're saying about precedent, but I understand you as a council don't give those variances.
True, okay.
Since this is the zoning board of adjustment.
Has already approved it basically, yeah.
They approved it, the next board may feel differently and may feel not, so I don't know that there's, it looks bad on behalf of the city because you as a council don't give variances. So, may, maybe that makes it easier for you. Kurt, Kurt had a concern because we, we are, we did get a variance for a couple of feet and you know, that may or may not be something that we grant in the future, but-
As Beth already pointed out, that pinch point there on the corner because it, it dropped below the setbacks, and I said, are, are we setting a precedent so that somebody else is gonna come along and say, well, you did it here? But, uh, to Jim's point, he's, he's absolutely right, and, uh, uh, since I had talked to you, I've just kinda come to grips with the idea.
Yeah, it's just something I didn't think of the time we talked. I thought, yeah, that might, might make it easier for you to accept.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
To, um, you know, the way the, the new zoning ordinance reads, um, three feet is like less than twenty-five percent of what a normal setback is, so, um, that's, you know, well within our, you know, regular means for, you know, approving those.
Okay. All right, I have more to second, any other discussion on resolution one seventy-six? You're none, call roll please.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Phil Meyer?
Aye.
Clint Hammer, or Heasling?
Yeah, you get to go twice tonight. No, aye.
That's approved five zero. Then we're back to resolution one sixty of twenty twenty-four, resolution amending the twenty twenty-five membership fees for the Meadows Golf Club.
Yeah, so as we discussed earlier, um, resolution one sixty, um, as presented with the following changes. Hundred dollar discount up for an Asbury resident, um, on family, couples, single or junior single memberships. Uh, no F and B, uh, required spend. Um, one hundred dollar, uh, discount on anybody who elects to take the simulator pass option, and that would be prior to December thirty-first. And then we have the two typo corrections on, as it pertains to league. Uh, league green fee not being twenty, but at nineteen, and the cart fee rate, uh, staying flat as well.
And the elimination of the early, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's no.
It's not in there.
What's not in there?
Well, the early pay, but I mean, it's not listed in the resolution, so I didn't-
It's not, it's listed as an original part of it, yeah.
Cool.
So Jeremy, just to clarify, for the league fee, nine holes, it's nineteen, but the increase is what, two? Was it three? Okay, two, okay.
So we are offering a hundred dollar discount or we are not?
We are offering a hundred dollar discount to Asbury residents only.
But no early, no early sign of discount?
Okay. Is how I understood that.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's what we came up with is roughly, was that the limit of six or seven point four?
Seven point four. That's the six percent, and it comes out if, if we have no, uh, if we don't lose anybody, it comes out to Okay. five thousand bucks.
The early discount is gone.
Right. Discount is gone.
Okay, and there's no gift cards or anything. All right.
It's just, it's just a hundred dollar discount if you are an Asbury resident, and then we are offering a hundred dollar discount before the first of the year on SIM package only, which was in the summary.
Anybody or just Asbury?
Anybody.
So we just wanna get it off the ground.
Any, you have to have a pass to have a-
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, you gotta be a pass holder to, to buy the-
Gotcha.
To buy that, but yes, we would extend that to, again, just to get that off the ground.
Okay, and we're not making-
And then no F and B and then the two corrections.
All right, I missed that one, sorry.
Make a motion then to accept resolution one sixty of twenty twenty-four with the proposed, uh, adjustments or-
Changes.
Changes, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I think we should change and get it set that it's not a membership, it's a season pass.
Yeah, we will.
Maybe we should be done with that.
Yep, so we will.
That's what it's called for now on.
The website, the website refers to memberships.
Yeah.
Mention it's pass.
Yeah.
Well, the season pass will still include the ten, ten day, for, advanced booking.
Whatever they're doing now. Whatever we're doing now, I will say this. If we elect to change the booking window, because we do have a tremendous amount of people that travel to play the Meadows. Um, and often you know, you have a group that, if you're traveling, you wanna be able to make your tee time greater than seven days in advance. What I would say is if we do end up changing the booking window for the general public, we would extend that three-day grace period to the pass holder then. We would add it on top. I could see us, I could see a day where we say, hey, we're gonna go fourteen days for general public or eleven days for general public, and then we would go fourteen days for member. They would still have their advantage, but-
The scenario you described, I would hope you as managing staff and budget signs if someone called you a month in advance and ringing.
Correct. Oh, we do, we have, we, yeah, there's a difference between groups and a foursome.
Even, even a foursome. I mean, like you said, you're not, you're, you're not gonna book a hotel room and all these things seven days in advance, so you know, you, I trust you to make decisions and, and be flexible.
Yeah.
In the better, better of the financial, well, being of the Meadows, if that means sometimes you have to, I'm gonna say bend the rules, but-
I, I do anticipate.
Take liberties.
I would anticipate outside of some other any drastic proposals that I would make next year. I think one of the things that we'll do is to make it equitable is to just have the booking window, the booking window, you can book X amount of days in advance and have it equal for everyone. Again, the pass holder does get substantial discount on times played. And for them to consume the most highly valuable times all the time is a little longer.
Still charge them if they don't show up?
Yeah, okay. Which has worked out great, by the way.
Question with, with Bob's change, does that change the motion? Because I, I'll put that in the motion if I need to.
What's that? We just referred to it as-
Change, change from membership to pass.
So we don't take the verbiage. Doesn't change the motion. We're not, yeah, we're not, it doesn't, we're really just approving pricing, it doesn't matter what we call it. I would think.
So the booking is your, your-
Yeah, we'll take that, we'll take care of that internally.
Okay, yep, all right.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on, on resolution one sixty? Call roll please.
Clint Hammer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Phil Meyer?
Aye.
Heasling?
Aye.
That's approved five zero. Uh, Beth, you have a review of proposed ordinance amendments? Do you wanna touch on those?
Well, one seventy-one, seven. Did you guys agree the same as I? Totally.
Yes, um, we, we, yes, staff have been, um, looking at our code of ordinances as a whole. It's been a while since we've, um, did a lot of, um, you know, significant upgrades or, you know, changes. Um, as I listed, from chapters one to one hundred and seven is what we're gonna, gonna just take a look at tonight. Um, we're looking at, uh, you know, once, you know, adding a couple of check signers, um, who are there, but really mostly includes everyone in my staff, um, plus the mayor. I see I have a typo there. Um, the setup program provisions, um, this is something new that's in the Iowa code. Um, the Caucasian people are recommending, um, this language and this addition to the ordinances. It would be called, you know, seven point zero-nine, um, setup program provisions. Let me refer to that. Um, chapter twenty-two, that was deleted when we did the zoning ordinance amendment, everything that has to do with the planning and zoning commission is now embedded into the zoning code. So the recommendation was to delete it in this part of the code of ordinances, so we didn't have any conflicting, um, information between chapter twenty-two and the zoning code. Um, chapter twenty-three, um, parks and recreation. Just simplifying that and saying, you know, the board shall make written reports to the mayor and city council, its proceedings and activities. Um, and that would include all the revenues and expenditures and anything that they, um, any, any proceedings they take about in the during a, a park board meeting, and this language is consistent with other, um, boards and commissions. Um, chapter forty-seven, park regulations, um, added Chloe Creek Park and Arrowhead Park. Um, they are two of the newest, um, parks in the community. Um, parking violations, instead of setting the parking violation as a amount that's set by the city code, um, I'm recommending that we set a lot of our fees in a schedule, and that way, and then the schedule is always approved by city council, and I just propose adding those fines to that schedule that can be set by resolution rather than having to come back and to amend the ordinance, um, for fine schedules. And just to show you, these are the, these are the fines that are proposing. And, um, chief has had a chance to, you know, he's, he's one that recommending, you know, these fines. And then there's some things that they ask for, like reports, those kinds of things. So we'll have a fee schedule, say police, and these will be the, um, fines and schedule that have to do with the police department.
Is, is there a way, I mean, I'm looking at those parking violations, I mean, if it's an emergency, if it's a repeat offender? Their second offense could be increased? See what you're saying.
Oh.
We can tell, we can tell too.
Well, it's, um.
I would think a hundred dollars would make me move my car, but.
Beth, does that golf, does the golf cart one also include ATV UTVs? Where's that come into play, Tom?
We actually have a schedule offense for that, that we can write a regular citation for.
I just didn't know which way, which way you were going.
That's how we usually do it.
Okay. Are you writing it to state code?
Yes, it would be under the state code for that.
Then we don't get money.
That's, I just, I just said no.
Honestly, I think I've written one or two with my career.
I saw an ATV running back on the path the other day, down below.
Which path?
On the one by, out of Maple Hills. Yeah, the Chloe Creek path down below.
Really?
Zipping by. Went up to Maple Hills and then turned around. I think that makes sense, Beth. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, for here, I'll zip out to, back to the agenda a little bit, cause there's, for the bicycle regulations. Um, I emulated this off of another city. Um, basically, they're just talking about basically, you know, riding appropriately. Um, and the biggest probably fine on the bicycle one is, you know, basically impounding the bike. This one does not necessarily, um, talk about I think this talked about e-bike specifically.
Help me out, Tom. Does our ordinance say they're not supposed to ride bikes on the sidewalks? But I mean, I understand why they do, but can we, can we take a little different look at it if it's an e-bike? I, they're more dangerous on a sidewalk than a regular-
Again, it depends on what kind of e-bike are we talking about, and that's some of the discussion we were having before, is these e-bikes seem to be developing pretty fast as far as what technology is available, you know. Some of these little scooters got little motors on them now that can go twenty, twenty-some miles an hour and yeah, what, what makes it an e-bike and what makes it a motorcycle?
The other one that's scary is, I was driving down the street the other day on one of those little electric scooters, the, the scooter passed me on the sidewalk. I mean, it was flying. Tried to drive it still. I know, I mean, I was, I was-
And this ordinance here kind of dresses that as long as you're being a stadium-
Maybe the wheelchair passed me.
Yeah, but this also, this this ordinance also addresses improper riding, where it says, no person shall ride a bicycle in an irregular or reckless manner, such as zigzagging, stunting, speeding or otherwise, so as to disregard the safety of the operator or others, so.
I think that gives us a little more discretion of like, okay, is it a kid just riding down the sidewalk and I'm not gonna force him onto the street, or is this somebody using the sidewalk as their personal road to get out of my way? I don't have to obey the traffic laws.
Because the, the other thing that came into play is someone told me they had an accident down on the trail. They were walking their dog and someone came flying past them on an e-bike, hit the leash of the dog, and they were yelling at the person with the dog.
Yeah.
It was their fault.
Is it, yeah.
Well, the e-bikes, is the e-bike a motorized vehicle or not? It's on the path, it says no motorized vehicles.
Well, that's again, is safety of operator or others, and I know as a bike rider, you know, I see a dog with a leash and I, I usually, I, my, my inclination is not to speed up, but to slow down because you never know where that dog or that leash is gonna go, and chances are it's gonna be me tangled up, so.
I, no, I-
I think the point is that the scooters and the bikes are going twenty plus miles an hour. Your reaction time's a lot less, cause you think it's a regular bike.
Well, it says speeding, so if you can, you know, I don't know, do we have to put speed limit, you know, more than ten miles an hour on the trails, I don't, you know.
Does the ordinance give you the flexibility? To cite someone, it says written right now.
Okay, as long as you can.
This one's hard to stretch to say, hey, look, you were operating. Painfully, you know, you, you're getting a citation and.
This one's a little more, um, specific on, you know, scooter, skateboards, roller skates, and like, and a personal. Assistant and micro mobility devices, this one goes a little bit more into the. You know, when you talk about the micro mobility device, you know, the, you know, the seven hundred and fifty watts. Um, for the electric motors. Again, it really keys in on. You know, speed and operating in a reasonable prudent manner under the existing conditions. They can be operated on the trails, but again, they, you know, need to yield the right of way when approaching pedestrians. And give an audible signal when overtaking and passing.
The section in here where you have, uh, prohibited in certain areas, seven, seven point zero two. And I don't see, oh, okay, never mind, I did spit now, never mind.
Yeah, basically saying they can't use them on the roadways in Asbury Road, Hales, Millbrook, Radford, Kecock, Spring Green, Cyple. On Sun Valley Drive, Eastview and Saratoga. I guess my comment was, should we add Forest Hills Drive? And basically too, and some of these are, you know, having like steep grades are. You know, under consideration for, there's some of these like Sun Valley isn't necessarily an arterial street, but there is. You know, by your house for us, there's that steep grade going down towards Larry Nagel's house and Karen's house. Any comments on that?
Didn't say anything about sleds, though, does it? Sled ride everyone, downhill.
Um, I have a comment about the park and recreation board for the reports. Are, are they saying that Sarah should have like a. A port like Jeremy does to come up before the council, or are you just talking about minutes of the meeting? Just the minutes? Okay, and also the added the Chloe Creek and Arrowhead, are you. Pocket parks included in that?
Those are parks. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, then in chapters ninety and ninety-five, basically, uh, went through those with Blaine and Nate. And the big changes to those were to, you know. Reference current specifications for building and connections. Going here for chapter ninety. When they're referencing the standard specifications, um, we're referencing now SUDAS. Um, for the specification and details unless, you know, they come something and is approved by the public works director and the city engineer. Probably, you know, the bigger changes that are occurring here and in the sewer. Any questions? This will be an ongoing project, the next meeting I hope to have a whole other. You know, batch of chapters.
How do you want them brought back, council, do you want them smaller pieces, just so Beth knows? She gets to tell them certain ones, do you want to approve them? What's your thought?
My thought was, I'm bringing it to you in pieces. You can go back and read and decide, you know, after you can give me any additional comments and we can discuss it the next time. I look at it as a project like our zoning code project where I'm bringing it to you in pieces. And then I want you to, you know, kind of approve it in one, you know, swift motion. Probably three swift motions, and since they are ordinances, be three readings.
Right, so it'll come back in the final form together. Alright. Move on to, since it's important, there's none. Every portion P and Z and park board.
I have one question, um, one of the things I have a hard time with, kind of goes back to what Karen said. I'm curious about how the park board, what kind of discussion occurred about the pickleball. Courts, because I can't tell that in the minutes at all about what happened. Is there, and they don't record those, so I, Karen, can you give me an update on what they, how that discussion went? Because we asked, I had asked for reference or recommendations for locations and, and I just was curious what.
Basically, Sarah is gonna go out and see if she can find some grants to pay for it. Um, they put it just to receive and file because Sarah is doing a lot of work behind the scenes.
But did they discuss locations, because that was a request, we weren't concerned about funding at that time, we just wanted to know, they have a preference for locations.
They, we did discuss, um, um, up at the Chloe Park. One layer, they did touch on the Arrowhead, but they didn't think that would be a good idea because of the houses around there. Um, Sarah did mention something about what Kurt said one time at a board meeting, putting some flags up. And she said she was gonna touch base with you about it.
Yep.
Never do. Or you were gonna touch base with her.
That would be. I'd have room for two.
That windy. People close to the, close to, more, more opportunity for bar and grill, I mean.
Where would that be?
It's just.
I'd, I'd put it right where the putting green is. And then I'd just build a new putting green where the chipping green is. That would, they'd have close proximity to the clubhouse, that wouldn't interfere, fear really would play. Um, you would either do that or the only other spot that you could. Wedge range would be the only spot, but.
Right across the parking lot, um, where the golf course, if you're looking, what, is there a?
That wedge range right there, yeah, there's like a short game area right there. I mean, that generate, that does. Generate some income.
Okay, I just, I just thought, uh, that would be, if it would be.
But putting green doesn't generate anything, I mean, you'd, you'd incur the cost of, we'd have to give me putting green, but that would be a. Be a bad spot.
It's right near business going from the clubhouse to the first tee and you've got. We did all that so you'd have light of sight or whatever.
Yeah.
I, I don't see that being feasible.
It seems intrusive in that area, but the wedge range, there is, there is. I don't know that that would really bother anybody in terms of player visibility, but.
No, there, I mean, you would, you'd lose that, you would lose that revenue certainly, um. Is that a bad, is it a deal breaker for the Meadows? Absolutely not. The lost revenue in wedge range, you may pick that up in additional food.
But there's players like, like, like to come out and practice, so you're taking that away too. Yeah, no, it's, it's a good point, we're just, we're talking through it and.
Unless you were to buy some required property on the other side of overland, which may be coming up on the market or something like that.
It was just a thought, sorry.
No, it's, we've thought about it, I mean, again, it's more. We're teetering the line of now. Acting more like a private club, which we received feedback that that's not the direction that people want to go, so.
The other thing I always ask, ask the park board to check out with you is the possibility in spring, at Spring Green in Wisconsin, they have. Um, they have, uh, snowshoe, not, they have snowshoeing on the pass, and they also have, um. Uh, what's the skis? Cross-country skiing, where they just have groomed trails where people.
We have a contact on that work, and they do all the market, that path.
Cause that would get you people out, again, hopefully use a restaurant and, and stuff too, just a thought.
Okay, I'm sorry, was there a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
Okay, any other discussion on reports? All in favor?
Looking ahead to our strategic planning session, and yeah, we're coming in, it's the end of November already. And so we'll be coming into our budget meetings coming up in January, which that schedule is in our packet as well. And I guess just everybody have a good Thanksgiving.
Say the same thing, have a good Thanksgiving, nothing else.
I have a question for Blaine, I believe we talked about getting new school crossing signs.
Waiting on, they're supposed to be here the twenty-fifth.
Cause I saw on that this past weekend, but two weekends ago, they were gone all weekend again.
And they were not on at all the day.
Yeah, so, I mean. If we're gonna do this, we need to do this right, otherwise. The liability swung back on us of not taking care of this better. I'm just saying as a council.
Be here, actually, they're supposed to be here, yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Along those same lines, was it when, was I reading it in the paper, or where did I read about somebody's pushing real hard for a crossing at? Um, Saratoga and, uh, Radford, cause the cars keep flying over the hills, the kids, there's some, somebody that's.
No, it was, it was a student at Roosevelt, you're right, and I don't know, they ever reached out to us?
They reach out to us at all, because that'd be, that'd be city Dubuque and us, but I mean, that, that, they were, they were concerned about cars coming down. Radford Road, and then they're crossing the street at Saratoga to go towards Embassy West.
They used to have crossing guards there.
Yeah, there, there's no crossing guards there, and there's no flashing.
They're supposed to cross at the lights and cross the street.
The other way and then come back.
That's the way the school directed them to do it, so.
If they're leaving the junior high, they should be crossing at the junior high, there's a crosswalk, there's a stoplight. That's, that has always been the instruction from the school district. And so I don't, I, I haven't heard anything about crosswalk.
In the paper or some. That it was pushing it. Section of the TH picked it up.
I just wanna wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Alright, uh, Beth, you gonna talk about? The questionnaire and the HVAC tonight, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I can have a couple minutes, yeah.
I, I don't have anything, so I'll set up, Colonel, do you?
Yeah, so one of the things that's in there before I get to the, uh, I just put in here as far as, um, in the council stuff, there is a budget schedule. Um, that's I put out, so this is what we can all look forward to for month of January. Also, we. We in August, um, this is probably the next slide, I've never heard a story, um, the city council approved. A proposal from all seasons, um, to replace two of those GO units. Over in the library, well, as life goes on here, um. They can't get the units that, um, we approved, um, back in August. And so, um. We got an updated quote from a different manufacturer for those units, which they're a little bit more expensive, they're about two fifty each, um, more. Units in the library, but then as life goes on here in. Couple weeks ago, when I was on vacation, the IT room was like ninety-two degrees, which wasn't good, and that unit is now going, so. Um, I also need consensus from the, from the council to. Replace that unit as well for the cost of twelve thousand five hundred thirteen dollars. Till I get these ordered. So the two you've kind of approved before, but the unit in the IT room is petition. I'll bring them, I mean, I'll bring, bring this back next council meeting for, you know, formal approval, but right now I'd like to just get them ordered. I just stand in here.
I thought we weren't gonna prove something before it came before us.
You're not, I mean, we're doing order, and we can, we can cancel the order if you don't approve it.
Well, I just remember that being a sticking point here about a month ago that. We didn't wanna have that happen again.
Well, I mean, in this case, you know, you've already approved the two units for the library, I mean, I'm just. I can, you know, hold off on this unit for the IT room and bring it back to you, um, at the next council meeting.
No, I personally don't care, it's just that was with a group consensus that that's what we were gonna do, so.
Well, this is kind of a proof here before it's ordered, I mean, not, not after it's installed.
Well, and this goes back to a discussion we're having in staff with spending limits. Because twelve thousand five hundred dollars, why it's not chump change. In a three million dollar budget, I would hope you would trust staff to be making these decisions, so. We get to the point of, Blink can't even keep lights running without signatures and council approval, so. I don't really care, so, so we'll just, I would hope that if we get a two hundred fifty dollar increase on a bid. That we can approve that on our own, but if you don't want, if you want everything in front of you, that's fine, but. Your point's a good one, so we, if you want the whole thing brought back formally in a resolution, we will.
I don't have a problem with raising limits or whatever, but I wanna be consistent with the way we're talking.
Then tell us how you wanna handle this, I'm hearing you don't want to prove it, that's fine.
I won't approve it at this time.
Okay.
The rest of them can.
What is lead time on this?
Um, probably four to six weeks.
No, I'm just saying, if we're gonna, if you're gonna say this is what we're gonna do something, then you can't change it.
But I hope that if we had a bid approved in, in, in the contractor or the. Vendor came back and said it's two hundred fifty dollars more because I can't get it. I hope to hell that we can be making those decisions on the fly, I can't imagine, well, I can't recommend, but.
I, I feel like I need to weigh in here, I, I agree with what you're saying, Bob, and I, I think as a, as a group, you're absolutely right. However, there is the, the one exception is, when you have an emergency or a maintenance issue, you gotta, you gotta go now.
And that's what we're looking at, we're looking at modifying, I'm sorry, cut you off, we're looking at modifying the spending limits. For this, that's the word we use, right, Blaine, if, if it's critical infrastructure. We're not asking people to spend fifty thousand dollars if you go on whim, but if it's critical infrastructure. We're looking to shorten that lead time or at least give staff the ability, and, and maybe HVAC is critical infrastructure. Certainly pumps and.
Yeah, for instance, just one occasion here, uh, my spending limit without prior approval. Uh, without Jim, without Beth, whoever, is five thousand dollars. Uh, the last pump repair that was approved was seventy-eight hundred dollars.
And with us, it's only ten.
Jim, it's ten, but. You know, we're going around getting each other.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with raising those amounts, but I'm just saying.
No.
Then we need to do that, we need to raise the amounts that you guys could do, we just can't come in and go, okay, this one we're doing, this one we're not. That's not a way to run the place.
So, yeah, so we can, we, if we can identify or maybe. Identify critical infrastructure, but we're looking for. Situations like this, and your point is well taken, and. Hopefully just give us the green light to order the two you already approved, knowing they're gonna cost a few hundred dollars more.
I think obviously.
And then at least we got those two in the pipeline, and then we come back and formally get the other one approved, cause it is over our spending limit. But we have been having discussions of how. Enhance, you know, the hog ties is getting things done, we're not asking to go buy a police car without permission.
I think we should review those and raise them, or at least consider raising.
Cause they haven't been touched in ten years.
I, I don't think they've touched them, and I've been here sixteen, and I don't think they've been changed.
I think that's what we should do, is we should put that on either, whether the agenda or the strategic planning or whatever.
Okay.
That we do that, raise, look at raising those limits.
So we're good with the two that you already approved, there is a slight increase, but it's minimal.
I'm gonna raise this question, it's like, okay, we have two coming in, we need a third. Is there any savings of sa- scale to it?
Doesn't seem like it, no.
Have, now to having the installation of them.
They bid them on individually, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
How many do we have in the building? Eight?
No. It's like twelve. It's like twelve.
What you're seeing here is the tip of the iceberg. The HVAC in this building is. Absolute joke.
Who's, who's the company we're paying now for maintenance? There's something to Colin, right?
We don't maintenance, but it's all seasons, but. And if you remember, we had, we had to replace dampers and all this other stuff was out and then. These units are failing after seven, nine years. I don't know commercially if that's normal. I'm just looking at my furnace at home, lasted twenty-five. It, it, and we're way past the point of litigation and warranties, we just. It, it, it's never been right. We, we've struggled from day one. Now, how many times of the winter we gotta go in and turn a breaker off and recycle so there's heat in my office and. Because if it's not heated. The warmth keeps. Well, I, I turn it up high enough and it keeps zero. Well, I get it, my, my monitor lights go out a lot. Okay, we'll get to two orders that's minimal. Bob's point is a good one and I understand we will bring that back and then just so you know, this, we have had this discussion, we do want to revisit. Critical infrastructure that we can move quicker. We're not, I didn't think Blaine's taking pumps home, but maybe he is.
And I guess the last thing then.
You guys have miscellaneous?
Last thing I have is the strategic, strategic planning is next Tuesday night. They have questionnaires out to. Department heads and to city council and mayor, and if you've got any. You know, comments, hopefully I could have them by tomorrow, so I'll prepare for the meeting. I appreciate it.
Okay, one, one last question before we adjourn on the budget schedule. Did we have meetings at noon last year?
We did.
Did you get mine back today?
So, I'll go check though.
If you're ready.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Most, all right, thank you. See you next Tuesday.
Is that a meal again?